Thank you for coming. We'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd. At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Steve Adamson from the Maricopa Community Church up to give us our invocation, after which we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brown. Do all please stand?
Thank you. This council law allowed me to open in prayer eleven years ago on the day when Maricopa was incorporated as the eighty-eighth city in Arizona, and we can pray now that God will continue to accomplish His purposes for this place. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray for those who by Your providence are in positions to make a difference in Maricopa, both the citizens and the leaders, that You may give them that rare heaven-sent ability to pull together in one direction at a time, and that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way, that You would build into each of us a respect and friendship for the others, that will provide a governing environment where calm and cool heads might prevail, an atmosphere of grace where various views can be thoroughly examined, and sensible conclusions drawn where lawful decisions will be supported by all. And may this all result in that high quality of life where we are free to pursue happiness with our Maker according to the measure of grace that each one is given. So help this council as they make wise group decisions for us as our representatives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll follow me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. At this time, move to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chappados?
Here.
Councilmember Frank?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great, thank you. That'll take us to item three, Proclamations and Awards. Please don't tell the Fire Marshal that all of you are here, and we may or may not be exceeding. Oh, hey, you need to leave, Fire Marshal. Good thing he's an MHS alum, so we're gonna be okay. He said hurry. All right, well, we better do this. All right, I'm gonna come down here. If all of you would like to come up who are MHS alums in our current class, it'll be great. All right. Well, we have a special proclamation tonight. As many of you may or may not know, that this is homecoming week for our Maricopa High School Rams. Give 'em a big round of applause. One of the things that's been happening here in the city of Maricopa, and I think it has always happened, but sometimes it perhaps ebbs and flows a little bit, and that is is that, you know, I think as we, so many of us are new and are transplants to the area, we kind of forgot, or tend to forget, a little bit about our pride in our high schools. And so I think that one of the great things that is happening here in Maricopa is that we're having a resurgence of that. And it's driven by our youth and our alumni, as well as all of the people who see and understand and recognize the power that can come when we work together. And so with that, I would like to offer this proclamation. Whereas the Maricopa High School is showing the Ram pride and honor of homecoming 2014, and whereas community groups and individuals are showing support for our local schools by partnering with Maricopa High School student organizations to promote school spirit, and whereas by showing pride in our schools, we are showing pride in our students and their teachers, and encouraging them to excel in the classroom and in their community, and whereas local businesses will compete with each other to show the most school spirit during the Paint the Town Red Week by creatively decorating their businesses, and whereas the homecoming is a time to reflect on hometown memories and bring the community together to make new memories with a safe, school-spirit, fun-filled theme. And now I therefore, Christian Price, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim September 1st through the 6th as Paint the Town Red Week, and September 5th as Ram Pride Day, and call upon all the citizens of Maricopa to show Ram pride by decorating their homes and their businesses in our school colors and by supporting our students, teacher, and school faculty. This is dated today, the second day of September 2014. Let's give 'em all a big round of applause. So with that, let's have a big Go Rams! One, two, three, GO RAMS! Strike up the band!
Oh, look at that!
It's a perfect fit.
And Maricopa High School Student Council has gifts for each council member as a gratitude from student council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for wanting to come down. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I've got too much stuff. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And as you know, this is homecoming week, so I hope to see you all at the game on Friday. Starts at seven. Don't be late. gonna be a fun week. This time, we'll move on to item four. This is the report from the mayor. At this time, I'd actually like to turn a few minutes over to Julia, who has an announcement for us. Councilwoman Gussi?
This weekend, on Saturday, they're holding an event called Stand Up Arizona. And this event, it's the Streets Don't Love You Back movement. It's a great event that's gonna be held in Mesa. We needed to look for a larger venue, and I was asked to be one of their guest speakers. As you know, I was born and raised in East Los Angeles, and we are not a product of our environment. We make our own destiny. So that's one of the reasons why I chose to go ahead and speak on this Stand Up Arizona event. And it's Gang Drug Violence and Abuse Awareness Conference, and I hope that people from the public, I'm gonna have some of these flyers out there, could attend. There'll also be, on Friday, this Friday, there'll be a meet and greet from 5:00 to 7:00 at Native New Yorker, and the guest speaker there will be Beverly Green. She's Snoop Dogg. I'm sure everyone here knows who Snoop Dogg is. His mother will be in attendance at the meet and greet at Native New Yorker this weekend on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gussi. At this time, I just wanted to give you a few things here. Obviously, we are in the homecoming week, as you know, the Paint the Town Red Week. We're so excited to see the energy and excitement that is happening. Just so you know, there's a parade taking place tomorrow at Copper Sky that will be part of this. We hope that you'll bring your families out and do this. If I'm remembering the time correctly, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 6:00, and so that will be at Copper Sky. And then at 7:00, the Vice Mayor and I will reinvigorate our challenge against one another, the Maricopa High School alumni team led by the Vice Mayor and flag football, and I'll be leading the other rabble-rousers that are certainly going to dethrone him this year. So we look forward to that. He laughs at me, but he might be right. Anyways, but we hope you'll come out and watch that, and then afterwards, there's a bonfire. So it should be a fun-filled event, so we hope you'll participate. I just wanted to also give you a couple of updates as to some of the things that we've been doing. As you know, we've been off for two weeks as we all attended the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, but before that, I just, I wanted to let you know that I had the opportunity to represent the city of Maricopa in Page at the ADOT meeting. We had the opportunity to go and have a firsthand look at the Highway 89 as it is crumbling off the mountain. It was a fascinating opportunity to look and see exactly what's taking place up there and how infrastructure is important, and what happens when it goes away. And when you're looking at an entire Navajo Nation that requires the access to that freeway, as well as the city of Page, it really becomes a big deal when that roadway slides off the mountain. So we were really the only, the only people invited to participate in that, and that says a lot about our current attendance at the ADOT meetings. So we're getting a lot of recognition for that. Also, the opportunity to attend the opening of the Loop 303. I don't know if I announced that before, but the Loop 303 had its opening, a great big interchange with I-10. It seems like it's a long ways out there, but the fact of the matter is, is infrastructure helps bring jobs, and so we're excited for that to happen. And from a regional perspective, it really gives us a lot of hope as we look at the southbound, or the South 202, as it wraps around South Mountain, the east and west freeways that we're working on, the Hacienda study, et cetera. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of hope there in our future because these things are taking place, not necessarily in Maricopa, but regionally. And so we certainly want to support our regional cities and counties in that. Also, at the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, I had the privilege of accompanying that with all of the council. We were able to go to many of different breakout sessions in which we learned about different things that other cities and towns are doing, things they do right, things they do wrong, and how that can help us as council members help run a better city. And so I always look forward to this each and every year with ninety-one cities and towns that are incorporated throughout the state of Arizona. We also this year had a unique privilege in the fact that we were granted the opportunity to moderate a couple of sessions. And so the first one that I was able to moderate was a session called Innovative Financing Strategies for Infrastructure and Transportation Projects. This is really important in this day and age where the dollars just aren't there. The feds don't have money, the state's in a budget crunch, and so of course, they come to the cities and expect us to be able to do everything. And so we actually looked at Texas and what they are doing right and wrong, and looked to see some of the legislative things they've put in place, and really had an exciting conversation with many of those that were able to do this. And so hopefully, we'll be able to start the conversation and start moving our legislature towards ideas that will help us as cities bear more of the burden when it comes to being able to build the things that are going to allow us to provide jobs, as well as move goods and services back and forth. Also, we were able to moderate another session about the I-11 corridor, how important the I-11 is to the city of Maricopa, and how it comes near us. We obviously want to be and have a hand in the fact in its planning stages, because if you show up after it's been planned, you're kind of a day late and a dollar short. So we want to make sure that we're participants in that from the get-go. And with that, hopefully, make sure that that comes through our planning area so that it can help bring jobs to the area. And then finally, we were able to participate in a speed networking breakfast, which really allowed us to get to know other members of the cities and towns there. But we found out that one of the things that it taught us was how we hope to be able to use it as a debrief on the sessions that we've been to. And so those are things that were already starting to be noticed in as we present ideas to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and it's bringing notoriety to the city of Maricopa, and we're excited about that. I would also like to thank my councilmembers who participated in coming to the sessions that I was able to moderate, especially the first one. I'd have to admit, I was a little nervous for that one, just because there was so much, so much going on, so much on the line, and I'd worked for weeks on it, so I appreciate your attendance. Thank you. But with that, that closes the report from the mayor at this time, and I will move on to the report from the city manager.
Mayor, two items to report on. I'd like to welcome to our executive team Kathleen Hagerty, who is with us. Stand up Kathleen, so people will know you. Kathleen has more than twenty years of experience in human resources, and she takes over as our HR director. And we are very pleased and proud to have her here with us. Carrie Gilmeack, as well, has more than twenty years of experience in information systems and technology, and I won't even share where we actually pulled him from, but let's recognize that he's a hometown person, and so he lives right here in Maricopa, and we're very proud to have him on our executive team. Mayor, one final item. Item number, on the council agenda, we would like to move item number 9.12 to the very end of the agenda for consideration. We'll be asking to move into an executive session prior to council taking or considering this item.
So you're suggesting or recommending to the council that it moves to item 10.6, basically?
That's correct.
Basically, okay.
Yeah.
With an e-session prior to that? Okay. So when we get to the consent agenda, we'll ask that the council make a motion to move it, or I guess we're not tabling it, so just move it. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move it off there. Great.
Those are the only items to record on your honor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That takes us to item six, the Call of the Public. I have two speaker cards, after which I'll call these first. All others can approach the podium afterwards. You have three minutes. But the first one is Marla Lewis from the Maricopa Chamber of Commerce, and then afterwards will be followed by Steve Chestnut, who is our MUSD superintendent, school superintendent. Marla?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. Thank you for the city staff, and also to everyone that's in the room tonight. My pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm here on behalf of the Maricopa Chamber of Commerce, as well as the American Indian Chamber of Commerce from the Valley, as well as the Ochjin Community, Harrah's, Ultra Star, and we are all putting on a conference the end of September. It's September 25th. It's a Thursday. It's gonna be an all-day conference. The conference is gonna be a fabulous opportunity. It's called Connect 2014. Connect 2014 is going to be an opportunity for all different types of entities to get together. We are promoting how to do business with the city of Maricopa, as well as the Ochjin community enterprises. So we're gonna be offering all different types of things. We're gonna start with a trade show. There will be breakout sessions in the morning. Some of our speakers will include Chairman Manuel. We will have Honorable Mayor Christian Price will be there doing the keynote speaker at lunchtime. I know Micah will be doing some information. He's gonna do a breakout session on how to do business with the city. We will have all types of various different breakout sessions in the afternoon on how to write a business plan, how to, what is social media, all different times. So there's something for everyone at this. There will be, we are looking for sponsorships, we're looking for registrations, and we are also looking for different types of goodies, for the goodie bags for the attendees and that. So this is a super opportunity. This is going to become an annual event, and so we appreciate that. If you need any more information, please contact me at the chamber, and we'll get you hooked up. And we appreciate the city's involvement to help make this happen. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any questions?
Yes. Councilman Chappados?
Marla, can you tell us what time it starts and where it's gonna be?
I believe it's gonna start at 7:30 in the morning. There's gonna be reception immediately following. We should be done by about 5:30 in the afternoon. I'm sorry. It will be out at Harrah's, and then some of the breakout sessions, because they don't have enough room to accommodate as big as we're gonna be, will be over at Ultra Star as well. Any other questions?
I have a question. What's the cost to attend?
There's several different ones, because there's six levels of sponsorship. There's different levels for attendees, whether you're registering, different levels also for if you want to just have a booth and exhibitor space at the conference. So I can't go, I wouldn't have time to go over all of them, but I'll be glad to send a packet of information to anyone who needs it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. Appreciate it. Steve?
Mayor Price, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the proclamation, and we're very excited about homecoming week. And I'm wearing the wrong colors tonight, and I'm without excuse. I don't have an excuse for that, but the rest of the week, I will be in red and black. So we're very excited about that week. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on a few items. Maricopa Unified School District is off to a great start with the new school year, and we're very excited about our students returning and getting back in the groove. Our enrollment is up about a hundred students, eighty students actually over last year at this time, or over 6,000 for the first time since about 2010. And we were up about a hundred students last year, so slow, manageable growth is the kind we like, and it's nice to see those numbers continue to increase. As I said, we're doing a good job. We're getting better. One great example of that was the Maricopa High School class of 2014, and as you may know, that class finished with $2.6 million in scholarship offers, which was a new record for us. And it just tells us that we have a lot of students thinking about going on to colleges, universities, technical schools, trade schools, and they're putting in the applications and getting those offers that really helped to make that possible. So we're very proud of that. Hope that we know that trend will continue, and we have plans in place to make that happen. Excited to report that we maintained our Grade B as a school district based on state tests. Those grades were released about a month ago, and we're very proud of that. What the state does is it boils down that letter grade from all of the tests and grades three through 10, boils it down to a point total. And we increased our district points from 120 in academic achievement based on state tests to 127 points. We only need 140 points to be an A district, and that is our goal. Our goal is to be an A district. We have one A school at this time. We have, we have ways to go, but we are making good progress. Very proud of that. To move an entire system that many points was a good accomplishment by our staff, our students, the parental support, and the community support to make that happen. So we're very pleased with that. Along those lines of our goals as a district, I want to remind you that on the November 4th ballot, the school district will have an override proposal. It is a 5% override proposal for seven years. It will be an additional tax rate of estimated to be $65.25 per year on a home with an assessed value of $100,000. So that's $5.42 a month for a home of that level of assessment. The override will provide annually $1.5 million, and will be earmarked for three things. Number one, to hire up to 22 additional teachers to reduce class size and add additional programs to our school district. Number two, up to three additional support staff. When you have that many additional teachers, you need some support staff to support them. Custodians, tech, support, that type of thing. And then finally, additional instructional technology. So thank you very much. And have any questions, contact the school district website. Be glad to answer any questions you might have, and any questions you have right now.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just wanted to make a couple announcements. Tortosa teams came and invited us all out this past Saturday, invited city council members, our city leaders, as well as the candidates for the current election or upcoming election. And it was a really great event. I hear Team Yellow won the laser tag competition on Sunday.
That'd be my team.
Exactly. Also, on Sunday, Families First Community Development Corporation, which is the organization that I've come up and spoken about for the after-school programs, they hosted a back-to-school event where they provided free meals and free school supplies to our Maricopa students. And it was a very nice event. A lot of people showed up for that. They had so many supplies that they have left over. So on Monday, September 8th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Pacana Park at the Ramada, they'll have another event, and they'll be providing more school supplies to our youth in Maricopa. And at this time, I just wanted to put a face to the name of the organization. This is Executive Director Yolanda Ewing, and she's just gonna come up and give a few words.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Yolanda Ewing. I'm the Executive Director for Families First Community Development, and I just wanted to share with you all a little bit about us. In fact, that we've been serving in the community for over five years, and part of our mission and vision is to empower and to educate families so they can have a better quality of life. We also provide a mentoring and meal program for after-school students where we teach them sessions such as basic etiquette, financial literacy, college prep programs, communication skills. And what we've added this year was a class for parents, and it's called Parent Talk, because we want to bridge the gap of communication between the parents and the kids. Also, we continually, annually, provide a prom dress drive for the kids who are unfortunate to be able to financially provide those dresses and accessories in order to have a successful prom. And so we've been successful. We've had over 400 dresses donated to us, and we provided 150 girls with dresses, accessory shoes, and an opportunity to be able to have a good time at prom without the parents being stressed financially. So we also have what is called Just For You Meal Service, and we provide meals for after-school programs throughout the community. And what we need is just more funding and more donations to help us continue to provide these services for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda. Appreciate it. Anyone else? I'd like to approach the council, the Call of the Public this time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move, and thank you very much for those that spoke. That takes us to the minutes. Councilman Chappados?
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself. I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you. Have one recusal. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It takes us to public hearings. At this time, we have no public hearings, and that takes us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have a, I need a motion, basically just a notification that we will be removing 9.12 from the consent agenda and putting it essentially as item 10.6 at the end of the, the end of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we need a, do we need a motion for this, Dennis?
Okay.
We can just move it off. Okay. So council, just, any opposition to that? I didn't think so. Okay. So moving on. So can we have a motion to approve consent minus item 9.12?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. That takes us to the regular agenda in section 10. That'll take us to item 10.1, where the mayor and council discuss a possible take action on appointing one citizen to fill a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is for discussion and action. Now, is this you, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. And it's quite ironic that the youngsters from MHS are here, as well as our Superintendent Chestnut, because the man I'm going to report has been very instrumental in working with the school district for a number of years. Jim Irving, not only he served on the school board as a board member here in Maricopa, he's also served in Illinois. Jim Irving is a tireless worker for youngsters in education. He will be a great asset to Planning and Zoning Commission. It's an honor to name him. I do not see him here, but I will offer up his name to be accepted.
Thank you. Council, the item before you is Mr. Jim Irving, former school board member, and Councilmember Brown would like to see him on the PNZ. Any opposition to that? If not, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the appointment of James Irving on PNZ.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilmember. Takes us to item 10.2. This is a resolution of the mayor and council declaring as a public record those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Article 8-6 Auctioneers, Bond Brokers, Scrap Dealers, and Secondhand Dealers, and Article Scrap Dealers, and Secondhand Dealers, and Article 8.7 Tobacco Retail Establishments of the Maricopa City Code relating to the enactment of rules and procedures to regulate auctioneers, bond brokers, scrap dealers, secondhand dealers, and tobacco retail establishments within the city of Maricopa, and amending the city code by inserting Article 8.6 and Article 8-7 in Chapter 8 of the city code. This is for discussion and action. Micah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next three agenda items I'll present as one. You can take action on them individually, but basically, they are the fruition of the first three business, sensitive business licenses that we originally brought to you in May. We're posted for 60 days. So our next step will be the 60-day cure period for teen dance halls, after-hours establishments, and magic arts, and we'll be bringing back before you in the October council meeting the remaining three sensitive business licenses for your consideration. So if you have any questions on them, happy to address those right now.
Council questions? I know we've gone over this somewhat in-depth, the work session and other agenda items. Any questions on this?
I just have one question.
Yes. Councilwoman Gussi?
I had read here that it mentions that it's carried for one year, the license. My question is, is it transferable? Let's say a different owner comes in and, you know, has his pawn shop or whatever, and wants to keep that same, is it transferable for that one year?
Mayor, Councilwoman Chappados, the licenses are non-transferable. If the new business wanted to come in, they would have to reapply.
That's Gussi, by the way.
They'd have to reapply. Okay, thank you.
Overwhelming you are.
Excuse me.
I confused him, I was wearing my glasses.
I did it. Sorry, didn't mean to bug you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The following is the ordinance, as comes with typically after a resolution. This is the ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, adopting Article 8-6 Auctioneers, Pawn Brokers, Scrap Dealers, and Secondhand Dealers, and Article 8-7 Tobacco Retail, excuse me, Tobacco Retail Establishments by reference as Article 8-6 and 8-7 of Chapter 8 of the Maricopa City Code and providing for severability and the effective date thereof. Discussion and action, item related to Resolution 14-33. This is an ordinance. Is there any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, you just read 10.2 again, not 10.3.
I'm sorry, that's what I had here on 10.3. Is that what you're showing, Vanessa?
Mine's different.
When, okay.
What was the question, Mr. Mayor?
I was told that I reread the wrong one. As the ordinance, obviously, I'm reading the initial header, as is required by law, but I have a shorter version on 10.3 and a longer version on 10.2.
Mine is reversed on my agenda.
Okay.
You read the correct ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so maybe that's still messed up, because there was a...
The resolution, yeah, it was flipped.
There was flipped, right. Okay. Is that okay, Councilmember?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we're doing the right thing.
All right. Thank you very much. So if that's been corrected and is the correct one, then we need to, motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Can I move to a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Chappados?
Yes.
Councilmember Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. And that takes us to item 10.4, a resolution of the mayor and city council authorizing the imposition and collection of fees for licensing auctioneers, pawn brokers, scrap dealers, secondhand dealers, and tobacco retail establishments, establishing the special business license fee schedule. Discussion and action. Is there any additional discussions or questions on this? Seeing none, have a motion, please?
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And that takes us to item 10.5. This is the resolution of the mayor and city council declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 26, 2014. This is for discussion and action. Vanessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight, as a resolution to adopt the official results from the primary election held last Tuesday, August 26, the total ballots cast for the office of mayor and councilmember were 3,712. This year, for election in 2014 and 2015, the calculations changed. It's no longer 50% plus one, so it changed to, you add up all of the votes cast for the candidates for that office, you divide it by the number of seats to be filled, and then divide that answer by two. So for those that got the majority of votes or with the new calculations, we are presenting tonight certificates of election to the following two candidates. Of course, Mayor Price for the office of mayor, and Councilmember Chappados for the office of councilmember.
I have two more years? I thought I was signing up for a vacation.
Although we are issuing certificates of election tonight, you won't get sworn in until the first meeting in December. So you still have some time.
Good, you're scullery to be here.
We are also issuing certificates of nomination for the four-year term to Henry Wade, Vincent Manfredi, Rachel LaFalle, and Marty Hermanson. They all got the number of votes required to move on to the general election ballot, which will be held November 4. And also certificates of nomination for the two-year term, which is Nancy Smith and Rich Vitielo. Again, they're running off November 4. And that concludes my presentation, and after you actually vote and canvass a vote, I do have certificates for everyone.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions, council? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Remove. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Vanessa.
Well, my first two certificates that I have are for Mayor Price. Did you want to come down here, Mr. Mayor? And for Councilmember Chappados.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. This is a senior without...
Our next nominations, or certificates of nomination for the November 4th ballot and Henry Wade. And for the four-year, or the two-year term, I have Nancy Smith, and Rich Vitielo. And these are your candidates for the November 4th election. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations, candidates. We appreciate it.
Who is there? Has that taken photos?
I don't think he's paying attention.
Thank you very much for being here, and congratulations again. That takes us to the newly created item 10.6, I E. 9.12, and we need a motion to move to E-session, please, before we go on with this. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, and we'll resume upon the conclusion of this E-session. That takes us to, again, the item 10.6 or 9.12, which is the purchasing agreement that was previously on consent. Council, do you have any questions on this item?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
The only question I had from the city manager was whether or not any city employees were going to lose their positions due to this contract.
We have our Public Works Director that will be addressing the issue.
Through the mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, the answer is no. We facility, janitorial services work within the Facilities Division, Dan Leonard, who I unfortunately sent home earlier tonight, which works in Public Works. There is one janitor, Gabby, and she currently covers a couple buildings. She will continue to cover those same buildings. The rest of the services, under several different contracts, are contracted out. This contract will consolidate all of those contracts and add a few more buildings into one contract, but Gabby will continue to do the Copa Center and the Police Department.
All right, thank you. That's the only question.
Any other questions, council? Seeing none, I accept a motion for this, please. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. You stuck it out for the night. We appreciate it. That concludes our council meeting for this evening, but we will continue now, council, as we return to E-session. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to return to E-session. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.